Good evening and welcome to the May 4, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Mayor and Council. The first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite incoming Junior Mayor Andrew Volat and his sister Alexandra to lead us, come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge. For everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our reflection, and I would like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Tonight, we have one set of minutes from the work session held on April 13. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move approval of the April 13 minutes.
Let's get that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's five zero. And next, we have presentations, and our first presentation will be, we will be getting to meet our new junior mayor. I'm going to introduce you. Stay with me. Perfect. Right here. Okay. And I would like to also invite Daniel Walder, Principal at Diamond Elementary, as well as Wendy Stewart, Andrew's teacher. Fourth graders in the city of Gaithersburg were asked what they would do as mayor to achieve community consensus with differing opinions on the uses for a new playground in a statewide essay contest sponsored by the Maryland Municipal League in partnership with the Maryland Mayors Association and Chesapeake Employers Insurance Company. Students from five area schools submitted 152 essays to the statewide contest. The city of Gaithersburg takes this program one step further by using the essays as the basis for its own junior mayor contest. Our Educational Enrichment Committee reviewed 87 essays from resident students and conducted video interviews with five finalists. It is a great pleasure to introduce our 2015 junior mayor, Andrew Volat, from Wendy Stewart's fourth grade class at Diamond Elementary School. As the winner, Andrew will have the opportunity to participate with the mayor and council at events throughout the year and have his essay published on the city website. Andrew was officially introduced at the State of the City event on April 23. Tonight, we would like to invite Andrew to read his award-winning essay and receive his award. So, Andrew, without further ado, here's Andrew.
If I were mayor, I would form a committee to analyze the situation. After the committee looked at all the citizen comments, held a hearing, and listened to the children, I would ask the committee for their top three opinions on what is the safest, most fun, and most economical way for the city residents to enjoy their new playground. As mayor, in having listened to all the comments at the hearing, I would sit with the children and start a plan of playground that would make most people enjoy the playground as a playground, as recreation that everyone can enjoy, not just skaters, although I would build a small, safe skating area. The children want slides, swings, sandboxes, climbing walls, monkey bars, and other recreation equipment. The other important idea is to have a large, open field area. The field should be divided by fences like Morris Park in Gaithersburg. If the field was set up this way, some could play baseball, some could play football, some could play soccer, and we could pave some of the field for tennis. Also, we should add a space for a picnic area. As mayor, I would ask all the city residents to help in some way to make this project possible. Some could donate money, the schools could have a contest on which school could raise the most money, businesses donated equipment and services, and all of the community could come together to put the playground together. In my opinion, building this playground could make Happy Town a better place.
Now, I'd like to invite Andrew's family to come up with us for the picture, but I'll also note that our Parks and Recreation Director is here in the audience and heard all of these great ideas. Who knows? Who knows? So, let's take a step back, Andrew. And you get to focus with me. Well done. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And next, we have proclamation from the mayor and council designating kids to Parks Day, so I'd like to invite Michelle Potter to join me, along with William Schrack, Educational Director of the National Park Trust. And Michelle, as I mentioned, is our Director of Parks Recreation and Culture. And I will let you take the lead.
Thank you. National Kids to Park Day is an annual day of nationwide play organized by the National Park Trust. It is a day to engage children across the country with parks and public lands to promote environmental stewardship and healthy outdoor living. The goal is to encourage youth to reconnect with nature, promote the riches of our parks, and foster an active lifestyle. National Kids to Park Day is officially in support of First Ladies Let's Move Campaign, which strives to reduce childhood obesity. Please take part in National Kids to Park Day, to be held on Saturday, May 16. The city has 27 parks to explore, found on the city's website, www.gaitersburg.gov/leisure/parksandfields. We also have a fabulous event entailing numerous activities for children during the sixth Annual Gaithersburg Book Festival on the grounds of City Hall and Griffith Park from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You can check out the Children's Village and all the information regarding the event at gaithersburgbookfestival.org. This is Buddy Bison, the mascot for the National Park Service. Come find him at the book festival this year.
All right. So, we have a proclamation, and by the way, I made her say that book festival stuff. Proclamation of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg. Whereas, May 16, 2015 is the fifth annual National Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas, National Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decade. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes mellitus, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And whereas, I should get a bonus for reading that one. Whereas, National Kids to Parks Day will serve as a tool in educating the youngest members of society to the values and enjoyment of the national park system. Now, therefore, I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim May 16 as National Kids to Parks Day in the city of Gaithersburg, and encourage our community to make time to visit a neighborhood, state, or national park. Proclaim this fourth day of May, 2015, and sign by me. Next, we have proclamation for Older Americans Month, and I would like to invite Grace Whipple to join me up here, as well as any senior advisory committee members who would like to join us up here. And I'm going to let Grace take the lead.
The United States Department of Health and Human Services encourages communities across the country to celebrate May as Older Americans Month. This well-deserved recognition acknowledges the many contributions older adults make to our communities through their experience, their talent, and their hard work. The city of Gaithersburg selected the theme "Active Aging Through Active Living" for this year's seventh annual Active Aging Expo. The theme was chosen to demonstrate the value of continuing participation in physical, mental, social, economic, cultural, spiritual, and civic affairs throughout a lifetime. The expo was held today at the Activities Center at Bora Park. Our partners included Asbury Methodist Village, the Montgomery Village Foundation, Montgomery County Department of Recreation, Montgomery County Housing Opportunities Commission. Those who attended were able to listen to educational talks, they were able to visit more than 80 different groups, that businesses, nonprofit organization, government groups that provided them with important information on products, services, and just ways of making their lives better than ever. We are very proud. I think today was probably our largest event. We're not exactly sure of what the turnout was. Senator McColsky sent a letter via her aide today, who spent some time with us, acknowledging the city and acknowledging the work that we do to support our older Americans and to give them the highest of respect. Thank you.
All right. So, proclamation time. Whereas, proclamation, by the way, proclamation of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg. Whereas, the city of Gaithersburg includes a thriving community of more than 12,000 residents over the age of 55. And whereas, the active older adults who live, work, and participate in Gaithersburg programs deserve recognition for their positive impact on the culture, economy, and character of our community. And whereas, older adults in our community have made and will continue to make countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas, the city of Gaithersburg is committed to helping all individuals live longer and healthier lives by promoting activity, wellness, socialization, and education. Now, therefore, I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Older Americans Month in the city of Gaithersburg, supporting this year's theme, "Active Aging Through Active Living." Proclaim this fourth day of May, 2015, and sign by me. Congratulations. And next, we have our proclamation of Historic Preservation Month, and I would like to invite Chair of our Historic Preservation Histor- District Commission. The name has changed over the years, Chris Kurtz, as well as Vice Chair John Roddy, to join me. Dean, John's not here. Yes. Great. So, May is Historic Preservation Month, and it provides an opportunity to bring attention to Gaithersburg's historic resources. A photo contest was held to capture these important remnants of the city's past, and the winning submissions will be displayed at city facilities as part of a photo collage. Mr. Chris Kurtz, Chair of our HDC, and Mr. Dean Ventola, a member of our HDC, will accept the proclamation. And here we have proclamation on behalf of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg. Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for encouraging sustainable growth and development, revitalizing neighborhoods, capitalizing on existing building stock, and fostering our city's sense of place, pride, and character. And whereas, historic preservation is relevant for both the city of Gaithersburg and for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages and all walks of life and of all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible and intangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a community, a city, a state, a nation. Now, therefore, I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Historic Preservation Month in the city of Gaithersburg, and call upon the people of Gaithersburg to join me in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Proclaim this fourth day of May, 2015, and sign by me. Welcome. Would you like to say anything? Please.
Two things, very briefly. First, to everybody on the dais and in the audience, it really is a pleasure and an honor to serve. All the commissioners and our Vice Chair are committed. It's an incredible wealth of prominent, not only architecture, but history of people that have been very instrumental in the development of the city, and so it's our honor to help preserve it. And the other thanks is to the staff who initiated and put together the contest, and we do have three winners, as the mayor mentioned. We have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, the 27th, and if you'd like to, we'd be very happy to have you attend, and we're going to have framed copies of this for the three photographers whose pictures garnered the most votes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is public comments. This is the time where the mayor and council invites anyone who'd like to speak on any topic that is not a public hearing, and there aren't any public hearings tonight. This is your chance. We ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes, that you state your name and address for the record. When you have 30 seconds left, the timer will beep and blink yellow, and when your time's up, it'll beep and blink red. Who would like to be the first speaker? Come on up.
My name is Aaron Rosenzweig. I live on One Thorburn Road. You now have all the facts. In light of everything, I request a permit to own non-crowing roosters. How could I be expected to know that the ordinances handed to me on pink parchment by Lisa Holland were from 2010, when we were allowed to have roosters? I only began to connect the dots when Kathy D. sent me an email saying that roosters were banned. Perhaps Lynn can advise you. This falls under promissory estoppel. It's not that I was ignorant of the laws, it's that I was misled by city officials. It just goes to show that staff never refer to the city ordinances. They travel around with outdated versions in their vehicles and simply never read them. Seeing as how you believe, we have two roosters, yet there is no issue with noise pollution. Why don't you grant us this permit? You told us you would kill our birds if we did not erect a privacy fence. Even while we were in the middle of erecting this fence, you still came to harass us. When I say "you," I mean city officials, not you personally. Our ordinances don't even require us to build a fence. I simply tried to meet you halfway. You angered many citizens when the Great Wall of Thorburn was erected, because they considered our birds to be community pets. You have upset an entire community for the whims of a few. I understand that when a phone call is placed, staff needs to respond. Problem is, they don't respond rationally. They don't play it by the book. They simply listen to the angry voices and do whatever they say, even if it is against the law. At some point, responsible staff should respond to the phone calls by standing and taking an hour or more of the caller's time, not mine. I never did anything wrong. My family has always been responsible. Section 4-102, Temporary Permits. The city manager may issue a temporary permit for the keeping, care, and protection of a prohibited animal where it is determined that such actions are necessary to the animal's welfare. I hope you grant us this permit.
Next speaker. Anyone else? Yes. Come on up, Oscar.
My name is Oscar Alvarenga. I live in 95 Braylen Court, and I am the PTA President at Summit Elementary School. I today had a meeting with our Superintendent of Elementary Schools, Mayra Smith, our Principal, Keith Jones, MCCPTA, Frances Frost, and myself all talked about portables at our school. Our school had requested two portables, and we were declined the two portables. The many reasons that they do decline portables, we only fell under one, which they say at this point, we didn't have concrete numbers on the books to show that we were going to be increased by a class, even though every number projected shows that. They want to see the numbers on the books first. And they said that once we have those numbers on the book, we'll be able to request, and they will then have to resubmit the application for us to get a portable. I told them that I was going to be here tonight, because I think it's a community issue. We are over 200 kids over capacity at this point now. They have declined us or pushed us back, I would say, in renovations, in adding space, and now they're taking space away from us, even though they say that at this point, they're moving ahead with their agenda of dismantling computer labs in 24 more elementary schools in Montgomery County. A lot of these schools don't have the issues that our school Summit Hall has, which is a high number of ESOL students. We have parent educators that deal with all sorts of different special needs that require more space. So, we're not asking for a brand-new school this year, we're asking for one or two portables. So, I just wanted to make sure our council members were aware of what's going on at Summit Hall, being that I've come here often and talked about our budgeting and other things at Summit Hall. And our school really wants to thank you guys, because we know that you guys do have been listening to us in the past, and we will continue forth in waiting for our projected numbers to be on paper. We think that by June, July, those numbers should be on paper, because it's when all the registrations come in, and at that point, we will then submit the information to the Board of Education and see where we go with that. Starting at the end of this month, I also will become PTA Cluster Coordinator for the city of Gaithersburg, and so we'll be talking more about other schools in Gaithersburg. Thank you.
Oscar, before you go, on a happier note, I understand that MCCPTA is going to honor you later this month as PTA President of the Year from Montgomery County. We couldn't be more proud.
Thank you.
We'll let them do their honor first, but then I'm sure we'll recognize you in here for that, for representing our community.
You don't need to know the answer right now, but I think it would probably be helpful to us if we could find out how many Chromebooks the school actually has, whether it's from you or if I should call the principal, that would be fine, too.
Yeah, and I could find that number out for you and let you know. I do know that we don't have enough at this moment, and I know that one of the issues was that they said that most schools are going to be very technology-heavy, so they don't need computer labs. Our school does not have enough for all the students, which is what they like, so I am pushing the agenda of making sure our school can start the year with enough computers in order to validate not having a computer lab for students, but I will get those numbers for you.
We're here to help. We agree with a lot of, you know, I think it's, actually, it's pretty outrageous, this decision, close the computer lab to take one of the, one of the elementary schools in the county that has the highest percentage of vulnerable students, or students from vulnerable communities, one of the highest farm rates in the county, you know, and the fact that, we've talked about this already, is that MCPS is terrible at forecasting actual need and capacity needs, continually underestimating, and they, you know, they usually only underestimate by 5%, which usually means two classrooms or one classroom for a particular school. So, you know, I think some of us, I know some of my colleagues were busy today making calls and contacting people, we're certainly concerned about this, and it's, you know, Summit Hall Elementary isn't the only school in dire straits, but we already know about the physical plant problems with the HVAC, the heating, the problems that the school went through, and then the core facilities, which are way over capacity as well. So, then to remove a classroom, which is a technology classroom that would benefit all the students, and then not ensuring that the technology to replace that is available at the same time, is pretty deplorable. So, you know, I don't, we're not going to back off from this, and we're going to continue to urge MCPS to address this situation as quickly as possible, and if we could demand a new school next year, I would be first in line to do that. So, the fact that it's been pushed back again, basically, another seven years, it's pretty ridiculous.
Dean, let me jump in on this as well. I happened to be at a summit earlier today with a number of people from the county, and I bumped into one of our school board members, Jill Ortman Faust, who had heard about the situation, expressed some outrage, and then I filled her in on some additional details, and she committed to go back and try to figure out strategically what we can do to help, because really, it's enough is enough already.
Yes. Thank you.
Kathy, did you?
Yeah, I just, I had brought this up, and I spoke with one of the school board members and emailed another one. I understand my email's been forwarded to some other school board members. I did talk to James Song this evening to get his perspective, he's the long-range planning director, and he, it was, whatever, he said that the normal allocation for portables occurs in March, that if decisions made after that, the portables won't even be in place by August. I asked him, tried to ask him what the latest date they could add a portable was, and at first, he said they couldn't, but then it became clear that staff allocations aren't finalized until April, so the idea that, or the determination that Summit Hall would need another staff member was made recently last month, and that was the point, apparently, where they decided to use the computer classroom as, computer lab as a classroom. I certainly indicated that I did not think windowless classrooms were something that they should be having as the new solution. I certainly feel kind of funny to be in the position of arguing for a portable. Usually, people are going, yes. So, really, that kind of says how far we've come along this path.
Yes.
But I really do think, I think we need to do a little more information gathering, and some of the central office staff has expressed a willingness to meet with some of us and discuss the issue, but I think we need to get the facts and communicate to them the problems that are with this. I asked him to tell me which schools they had already done this at, and he hasn't so far, but perhaps I will have that information. It does seem to me it's a sort of a shortcut to provide space that might work in some schools, but I'm not sure it's advisable for Summit Hall.
Correct. And if I could say one last thing that you brought up is the transparency, is what we've asked, we've asked the MCPS to be more transparent with us. The principal was asked by parents and people like myself, why are we denied portables? And he says, I don't know right now, and the reason is because of the communication, not because Mr. Jones isn't trying to get the information, but that wall that's put up, it's because we said so, and that's not right, and it's not right for the community. Like I said, over 600 students there, we have over 1,200 parents that are asking, and so that's why we're at, yes, fighting for portables at this point.
Yeah, I did ask what decision-making and the process they use for allocating the portables, and he said it was made based on the demographer's estimates made last November, which I don't find necessarily a very valid source. I asked at what point, if we had more accurate numbers, they could use them, and really didn't get an answer on that, so.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Oscar. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Not seeing anyone. We will go to from the mayor and council, and before we actually start, I wanted to make a note that I should have made at the beginning of the meeting, which is, we have an agenda item for staff guidance for an opportunity grant, and that item has been deferred to a future meeting, just in case anybody was here waiting for that. So, from the mayor and council, we will start. So from the mayor and council, we will start with council member Neil Harris.
All right. Hello, everybody. May the fourth be with you. Glad to get to be the first one to say that here today.
No less.
I hope you had a great weekend and enjoyed the two days of spring, and it's now summer, apparently. Drove home from a meeting today, it was 88 degrees outside. Just a few quick things that I'd just like to touch on. First of all, State of the City was great this year. Judd and the staff did a terrific job. I thought it was really a terrific event for all of you who were there, or those of you out in TV land who attended. I'm sure you had a great time. I've only heard good things from everyone. Attended a meeting of the county's team that's working on a new economic development staff. The county executive is basically blowing up the existing economic development staff and looking at building a public-private partnership organization. It looks like they're pretty serious about going forward. This is going to take a while, but I'm very optimistic about what I've seen so far because from some other economic development meetings that we attended, including one this morning, the economic figures for this county are lagging what we see elsewhere. And this is the time to really get it together. The prognosis for federal jobs is looking dim going forward. The number of jobs is likely to shrink, especially the good-paying jobs. And we need to build a base of better-paying jobs. And we're seeing a lot of growth in jobs, and it's mostly in not such good-paying jobs at this point. So the, the number of jobs in this county is going up, and the total amount of income that those jobs are generating is going down. So that's, those are not the numbers that we want to be seeing. Saturday was Kentland's Day in my neighborhood. Great day, gorgeous spring weather, good crowds, very good job by the people who created that event. And I guess I'll just skip over some of the other items and go to the really important announcement. This is an election year here in the city, as some of us up here are well aware. The mayor and council are seeking to fill two very important jobs as full member vacancies on the Board of Supervisors of Elections. We're likely to have a spirited election season, so we need people to fill these important and interesting jobs. One of the incumbent board members has requested reappointment, but we need more people to step up. The Board of Supervisors of Elections works in conjunction with the city's Department of Legal Services. The board oversees the registration of voters, petitions for elected office, and officiates over all city elections, regular or special. The board consists of five members and one alternate, who are appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council. Members serve staggered four-year terms. Regular elections are held in odd-numbered years, on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, with the next election set for Tuesday, November 3, 2015. All applicants must reside within the corporate city limits and be a qualified voter in the city. Resumes and letters of interest should be submitted via U.S. mail to Mayor and City Council, 31 South Summit Avenue, Gaithersburg, Maryland 20877, or sent via email to cityhall@gaithersburgmd.gov. These positions will remain open until filled. For more information, visit the city's website or contact City Attorney Linboard at 301-258-6310. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Neil. Ryan?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before I get into some formal announcements, I want to take a moment to share some personal thoughts in response to the ongoing testimony of Mr. Rosenzweig. These are just my personal thoughts. They don't represent those of the rest of the mayor and council necessarily, or staff. And unfortunately, Mr. Rosenzweig left before we were able to have mayor and council comments. But I just wanted to publicly state some thoughts and response after sitting through many, many, many weeks, months, really, of testimony and comments during the public comment period for Mr. Rosenzweig regarding the city's rooster ban. Mr. Rosenzweig obviously has the right to express himself within the parameters of the First Amendment. That's why we have public comment periods here at City Hall, and he's entitled to continue doing that. But at the same time, we have a right to respond to those comments. I have sat here, like my colleagues, for months quietly and politely, listening to those comments from Mr. Rosenzweig and reading the many emails that he has sent to the city. If he had some personal encounters with the city's animal control staff that he felt were negative or inappropriate, that's unfortunate. But let's set the record straight. Those encounters happened some six or seven months ago, and since then, there have been no visits from animal control to his home, as I understand it. No one has taken any of his chickens, regardless of their gender. The council responded to his concerns some weeks ago here from the dais with a deliberative and public discussion about our rooster ban, during which each member, one by one, stated that they were not inclined to pursue any changes to our law at this time, and each one of us explained our reasoning for that position. And the city manager has conducted an internal review of animal control personnel activities at Mr. Rosenzweig's request and responded to his email with those findings. I even personally spent a long time talking one-on-one with Mr. Rosenzweig to try to find some common ground in resolving his particular concerns. He indicated to me that he wanted to work with the city to pursue that compromise approach, but then he promptly torpedoed that effort and instead decided to up the rhetoric of his public comments. I understand he's trying to draw attention to an issue that he cares about by using provocative rhetoric. I also understand he's trying to teach his children a civics lesson in how local government works, which is commendable. But let me be clear. His comments during the week of Martin Luther King Day, comparing the city's rooster ban to slavery and segregation, were highly offensive. And his comments during the week of Holocaust Remembrance Day, comparing rooster bans to concentration camps and gas chambers, were incredibly offensive. So if he wants to keep coming every week in perpetuity, that's his right, under the First Amendment. But Mr. Rosenzweig does himself and his cause no favors by continuing to employ offensive and incendiary rhetoric, to take facts out of context, and to use other questionable tactics with his testimony. Again, that's a personal comment from me, does not necessarily reflect anyone else's views. On a lighter note, I have a formal announcement about upcoming events and activities in the month of May. You can buy fresh local produce and more at the Gaithersburg Farmer's Markets, now open Saturdays from 9:00 to 2:00 in Kentlands, and Thursdays from 12:30 to 6:00 in Old Town. Zumba in the Park returns to the City Hall Concert Pavilion on Friday evenings at 7:00 through August 28th, but there will be no classes on May 15th and July 3rd. Neil Simon's Brighton Beach Memoirs is onstage at the Arts Barn, May 8 through the 24th. You can enjoy model trains and family activities on Train Day at the Community Museum on May 9. Mom can play free with a paying customer on Mother's Day at the miniature golf course on May 10. The Gaithersburg Police Foundation invites you to its 7th Annual Fundraiser at Dogfish Head Ale House on May 12. You can learn about the life and works of Mark Twain at the Community Museum's Tuesday Topics Session on May 12. Celebrate bicycling as a clean and healthy way to commute during Bike-to-Work Day on May 15. The 6th Annual Gaithersburg Book Festival, anyone heard of that? The region's premier literary event, it is indeed the region's premier literary event, takes place on Saturday, May 16, on the grounds of City Hall. Gaithersburg Dogs and Cats can get free vaccinations at the May 17 Rabies Clinic at the Montgomery County Animal Services Center. Dolly Madison Presidentress, an original one-woman play, takes center stage at the Arts Barn on May 20. The Gaithersburg Water Park opens weekends starting May 23, and then daily starting June 1. You can join us for Water Safety Day on May 29. Enjoy a performance by acclaimed dance ensemble Quintango, and then get in the act with a dance party at Totally Tango on May 29 at the Arts Barn in Kentland's mansion. And finally, honor those who have given their lives in military service on Memorial Day with a solemn observance on May 30 at Crisman Park. For more information, including hours, admission fees, and ticket purchases, you can visit the city's website, www.gaithersburgmd.gov. Neil already touched on a number of events and activities that various council members have participated in. Did you mention this morning the Economic Development Breakfast?
Vaguely.
Vaguely, okay, so I'll skip that, since you've already mentioned that. I did want to mention that I had an opportunity to pop by the Active Aging Expo today at the Activity Center, and I just want to commend the staff and volunteers and all of the organizations that participated in that, as well as all the folks who came out to enjoy the services and the information that were provided at that event. It really was a wonderful event, as Grace said earlier. And I wanted to also thank Girl Scout Troop 274 for hosting us earlier this evening and providing us with a very informative and well-planned presentation on jaywalking and safety. And Sergeant Scarf has apparently volunteered to help them out with implementing some of their ideas and some of his ideas as well, which is always a good thing. And just thanks to the troop and their leaders, the parent advisors, for having us and hosting us. It was a nice little event to have before the meeting tonight. And also wanted to mention, last week, the Montgomery County chapter of the Maryland Municipal League had our annual meeting with the county executive. In lieu of the normal budget presentation that's provided by the county executive usually every year at that meeting, we decided to focus in on a couple of issue items that are high priority for municipalities in the county. And that included a detailed discussion of economic development, discussion of what sort of effect the Supreme Court's forthcoming decision in the win case might have on our tax revenues, and some other very interesting and complicated discussions. So stay tuned for what might come out of those discussions, and we hope we'll continue to have the good conversations with the county executive staff to make some progress on those issues. And then finally, I just want to wish all the moms out there a very happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Ryan. Henry?
Well, a lot of exciting things going on. One of the things that I, it was also added, a lot of us were at the Kentland's Day Parade, it's an annual thing, and really enjoyed it. This afternoon, Grace, you need to be commended on the excellent turnout for the Active Aging Expo. A lot of people turned out for it today, and when I saw Grace today, she was all smiles, so it must have been very, very successful. Congratulations to the junior mayor. He was from Diamond Elementary School, which is, happens to be a favorite of mine because all my kids went there. But at the same time, speaking of Diamond Elementary School, I'm going to take time to do a personal thing. The Montgomery County puts on a "Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?" And they pick one student out of each school, and my grandson Carter was picked from Diamond Elementary School again. And I went down and watched the, it was done at the Silver Theater in Silver Spring, and they are correct. We are not smarter than fifth graders. There are some bright kids that were there, let me tell you. I did not get all the answers. I missed one, and my grandson just thought that was, was behind the times. Congratulations to all the kids that were there. There was 39 of them that were picked from the school systems. We had Donovan Diamonds, and I want to thank everybody who donated items for the auctions, and also for people who came out and supported this great cause in our city. The other thing I would like to say is that I want to just second what Ryan said tonight. It needed to be said, and Ryan, I'm glad you said it so eloquently. I'll just leave it at that, but I support your statement wholeheartedly. I have something to read now. After closed executive session, the closed meeting was held at City Hall by the mayor and city council on Monday, April 20, 2015, at approximately 10:10 p.m., pursuant to a motion adopted unanimously. The meeting was proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions, Article of the Ammated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305A3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. The topic discussed was the Stevenson property. President to meetings were Mayor Ashman, council members Druscola, Harris, Sesmond Spiegel, city manager Tomasello, deputy city manager Enslinger, city attorney board, Assistant City Attorney Johnson, planning division chief Mattson, and planner Mann. Upon conclusion of the discussion, the meeting, the closed meeting was adjourned at approximately 10:25. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Henry. Kathy?
I was happy Mike joined me for part of it to represent the city hosting a walking tour of Old Town in the North Frederick Avenue corridor on Saturday. It was sponsored by the Coalition for Smarter Growth, and people came from all around the region. There was one person from Virginia, and other people from Greendale. So people got to see a view of the city, and the focus was on past and potential development and how this would be, work with transit, particularly the proposed BRT system on 355. I was happy to speak at the annual meeting of the Muddy Branch Alliance. They were our outstanding organization this year. I think they invited me before they knew they were going to be there. But I got to learn more about all the things they do to volunteer in our watersheds and educating people about our watersheds, and gave them a little feedback about my ideas on things they might want to do if they have even more time. I certainly want to give a shout-out to our staff for the impressive State of the City and Active Aging Expo. It was clearly very busy and exciting today, and you could get all kinds of free stuff, as well as good information. And I have one formal announcement. This follows up with Neil's from the Board of Elections. This is everything else you can volunteer for. The mayor and city council are seeking members to serve on a number of city boards, commissions, and committees. Joining is a way to get involved and help your community. The following have vacancies. The Animal Control Board, there's one position for an alternate public-at-large or business community, and one position for an alternate representative of the Montgomery County Veterinary Medical Association, or a person who shall have training in or experience in the proper training or care of animals, and those positions are open until filled. For the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs, we need one full tenant representative and one alternate tenant. Those are open until filled. We need people for the Community Advisory Committee, the Economic and Business Development Committee, the Educational Enrichment Committee, the Multicultural Affairs Committee, the Police Advisory Committee, the Senior Advisory Committee, and the Transportation Committee. If you are interested in serving on any of the above, please send a letter of interest and resume to Mayor and City Council, 31 South Summit Avenue, Gaithersburg, Maryland 20877, or send an email to cityhall@gaithersburgmd.gov. You can find out more information about the committees on our website at www.gaithersburgmd.gov, or contact the city manager's office at 301-258-6310. It's a great opportunity to get involved and learn more about the city.
Thank you, Kathy. Mike?
Okay, let me start with an announcement about our next meeting, an onsite work session. Notice to the general public is hereby given that in lieu of a work session at City Hall, the mayor and city council and staff will participate in an onsite work session on Monday, May 11, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. The city council and staff will meet at Robertson, at the Robertson Park Youth Center, at 801 Rabbit Road, to receive a presentation on options regarding the Quince Orchard Boulevard Street reconstruction and tour the project site, which is Quince Orchard Boulevard, which extends from Quince Orchard Road to First Field Avenue. Members of the public are welcome to attend the onsite work session, but transportation will not be provided. Please contact Assistant City Manager Dennis Enslinger at 301-258-6310, or for more information, or if you need accessibility accommodations, you can contact Mr. Enslinger. I just wanted to thank Ryan for his remarks tonight regarding Mr. Rosenzweig's continuous or ongoing testimony. I agree 100% with what you said. I was actually going to deliver some remarks myself, but you're much more eloquent than I am, so, and that's probably the last time you're ever saying. So anyway, share your views. It's good to start a week, the first full week of May, in which all of the daily temperatures begin with the number eight. That's pretty cool. I guess we're well into spring. Well, it's not cool, but it's, I guess it's awesome. Okay. Again, I want to thank staff and for the terrific State of the City, for all the other events they've brought. they've run, and also for their help with, in collaboration with the Kentlands Community Foundation, the Kentland Citizen Assembly, and the Kentlands Merchants, a number of Kentlands merchants for terrific Kentland's Day. I hope everybody appreciates the weather that we ordered up for Saturday. It was fantastic. It was a little windy, but it was not windy enough to blow away tents or anything like that. So another great event. One note, today we learned that this afternoon, Dr. Paul Vance, the former superintendent of Montgomery County Public Schools from 1991 to 1999 passed away. He was 83 years old. He's also a past president of Montgomery County NAACP and also a past superintendent of the District of Columbia Schools from 2003 to 2006. So he was a very nice man and I think one of the things he focused on when he was, he saw a lot of change happen in MCPS when minority enrollment went from 10% to about 40%, I believe, something like that. I don't remember the exact numbers. And then he took, he took the helm at the DC Public Schools for a short period of time before the upheaval that began in 2006. But one of the things that he focused on was communicating the high expectations for all students at MCPS and that was a big part of his effort, a big part of his focus. So I want to send our condolences to his family and thank them for sharing him with us for such a long time. On Saturday, the mayor and I were fortunate to be invited to attend an Eagle Court of Honor for Troop, Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Troop 1760 at the Gaithersburg, the First Baptist Church of Gaithersburg. And receiving the honors of Eagle Scout that evening were Garrett Scott Adams, Hunter David Benai, Leonard Liu, and Stephen Newman Palmer. So I want to congratulate those young men and their families and their troop. It's a, you know, it's a small number of Boy Scouts that actually become Eagle Scouts. It's even a smaller number of, it's a small number of Boy Scouts who are actually eligible to become Eagle Scouts that are, that achieve that. So when you listen to them and the things that they did, their service and their other achievements, and also how they've grown through scouting, I think that's pretty important. I never made Eagle a Life Scout. I stopped at Life Scout, I know. Anyway, so I want to thank the troop for the invitation to attend and congratulate the boys. And then one other piece of news here from Run Washington Magazine, just came out. A business in Gaithersburg called Fleet Feet Gaithersburg was named the best running specialty running store in the state of Maryland.
Nice.
Right? And they are located in Kentlands and it's where I buy all of my running gear. So I'm glad to be a customer and I'm very proud that they've been selected for this honor. And then another rating was the best evening race. And we have an evening race that we run here. We didn't get the best one, but we were runner-up. The Run Under the Lights 5K was runner-up for the best evening race. Now, they didn't rate the daytime 5K here, but we already know that the Kentlands-Lakelands 5K is the best 5K in the state of Maryland. So anyway, congratulations to, to the people who run that, who organize that race and the people who come out to run the race, and also to our friends Chris and Robin at Fleet Feet Gaithersburg, and to all the people that support their business who voted for them too. So anyway, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And thanks for bringing up that Eagle Scout ceremony. Three of the four kids who graduated Eagle Scout were from Brown Station and some of the families were there way back when I was PTA president, so it's pretty cool to see that. It's also very impressive when they gave the Boy Scout a pledge. Mike was able to do it by heart. I was, I was really impressed. He remembers it after all these years.
Well, it's also part of the program. Which I didn't have, but I can remember.
He wasn't reading from the programs. I wouldn't have been impressed if he could read.
You don't forget that.
I want to thank everyone for saying everything, including Ryan, for his statement. And, you know, I'm not going to go over the litany of events, but I will just give one special little extra shout out to Britta and her team and the cable guys and our, you know, our communication staff on State of the City, because it really, it really came off well and you guys did, you know, as a, did my first time doing this as mayor, I had more of a view of how much work goes into it this year than I've had the previous seven and it's just, it's very impressive and I'm very grateful for how well you made this all look. So thank you for that. The balance of my time for the next hour will be about the Gaithersburg Book Festival. I'm just telling you now. Chris has, he told me he's got a spot that he's going to run well, and I know he's got a slide, so I'm going to, I'm going to give the TV guys a chance to run all their stuff. We have a great event coming up on May 16th. Can you believe it's less than two weeks away? And that means actually that May 17th and future meetings, I'm not going to be talking about it so much, other than I'm going to have one meeting where I thank everyone. But we have this amazing crop of authors from all different sort of genres, whatever you're interested in, stemming from David Axelrod, who we know is a political advisor, and we have the celebrity chefs Brian Voltaggio and Katho Armstrong and Nora Poyon, and we have Maureen Corrigan from, from Fresh Air, NPR, and just this great group who are coming to Gaithersburg to sort of, to bring the world to our doorstep, just this amazing group. So we have workshops for aspiring writers. We have a whole area we dedicate to children's activities. We call it the Children's Village, as Michelle mentioned earlier. Fantastic performances, readings. This year, we actually, we have, we have a couple of sort of diversity programs that we hadn't had before. One is we have this panel talk from this group called We Need Diverse Books, which is, which is actually a movement that's gaining momentum in the publishing industry, in children's publishing in particular. So they're going to, they're going to talk, we have the two founders of that, as well as a couple of other authors who are part of it, they're going to talk about that movement. We have, for the first time ever, a Storytime tent that is dedicated to stories all day in languages other than English. We've never, we've never tried that. And that's being run by universities at Cheyenne Grove, a new partner for the book festival. So we're really excited about that. This is a free event, free to attend, free to park. We do hope that if you attend and you're in a position where you can buy a book, you do buy a book because it does help the book festival, but anyway, gaithersburgbookfestival.org. You can find all you want there. Follow us on Facebook and Twitter and we hope to see you there. Bring family, friends. You've heard the whole spiel, okay? We all know. I'm seeing a few nods in the, in the audience, right? You all, you know your jobs, right? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have, from the city manager, Tony.
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me, mostly staff is working, of course, on the budget. What happens between the work session adoption, in keeping with our efforts to craft the most accurate budget from year to year, there may be somewhat more subsequent changes than you're used to in previous years. Most of them are, as usual, relatively minor and staff, of course, provide a complete list prior to the adoption. You may or may not remember several months ago, the community of Sabrebrook asked for some attention to their light poles and we determined that we would not be repainting the poles, instead that they were up for replacement. I did approve the purchase order for those light poles today, so that project is going to launch relatively soon. And then just from the agenda meetings we've had the last few weeks, it's just obvious it's going to be a very busy and summer for you guys. We have some major presentations coming up on the police station, the CPSC project, the housing programs, even possibly the APFO. So we will try to keep it moving. We look forward to working with you, but it's going to be a busy summer.
All right. Business goes on in Gaithersburg, even during the summer. Next, we have Economic Development with Tom Longgan.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. Next Tuesday, May 12th, I will be presenting as part of the It's All Free Seminar sponsored by Montgomery County Business Innovation Network. Together with reps from the State Office of Economic Development and County Office of Economic Development, we will be detailing resources available to small businesses such as site selection assistance, loans, grants, tax credits, et cetera. The event is free. It runs from 9:00 AM till 11:30 at the Germantown Innovation Center located at 20271 Goldenrod Lane up in Germantown. There's no cost to register. If anybody's interested, they can reach me directly at City Hall. I'll get them registered for the event. Secondly, it's always nice to welcome yet another new business relocating to the city. Icon Clinical Research, a global provider of outsourced contract research to the pharmaceutical, biotech, and medical device industries, recently signed a lease for nearly 13,500 feet at 820 West Diamond Avenue, also home to Adventist Health. This is a company specializing in strategic development management and analysis of programs that support clinical development. The company has signed a five-year lease with an anticipated move-in date of July 15th. They are based in Dublin, Ireland, with a presence in 40 countries and 80 offices worldwide, 10,000 employees globally. We haven't gotten an estimate yet on how many are going to be here, but it's nice to see there are 31 jobs listed for the new Gaithersburg office on indeed.com. It's also nice to report that this lease does bring occupancy of that building up almost to 90%. Tony, I believe that was NIST headquarters at one time, and this is the highest occupancy it's had in almost nine years. Thirdly, and finally, just a reminder that responses to the RFP for Civil Engineering and Landscape Architect Services for the Old Town Park Plaza Project and Streetscape are due by no later than 4 o'clock this Friday, May 8th. The RFP is still available on the city's website under City Projects, Old Town Streetscape or Old Town Park Plaza. If you have any questions, you can reach me directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have ordinances, resolutions, and regulations, and we are going to invite Michelle Potter to lead us.
Thank you very much. This is an introduction of an ordinance to repeal and reenact with amendments, Chapter 15A entitled Parks and Other Properties, Section 15A-1 through 15A-19 of the City Code and enacting new Section 15A-20 entitled Emergency Park Closure. The review and revision process. Chapter 15A of the City Code was last updated in 2001. Given the technological and practical changes that have taken place over the industry over the last decade alone, the review and revision of the park code was determined to be a course of matter. A park code task force was formed for this purpose and included the following staff members. Scott Scarf, police; Kevin Roman and Lisa Holland, planning code; Charles Reed, public works; Frank Johnson, legal services; Gardner Torrance, Laura Shart; Jim McGuire and Dave Lettington of Parks Recreation and Culture. Recommended changes have additionally been reviewed by deputy city manager Dennis Enslinger and by city attorney Lynn Board. Various municipal and county park codes were researched in Maryland and other states. Staff also benchmarked national and industry trends through the resources provided by the National Recreation Park Association and the Maryland Recreation Parks Association, which included jurisdiction surveys. An overview of the changes. Some general renovations were applied, as needed throughout the park code. In the existing code, neither city nor city manager nor city council was appropriately capitalized. The proposed revision encompasses all these grammatical adjustments. Other opportunities for corrections included erroneous capitalized words. Gendered pronouns for both members of the public and the city manager defaulted to the masculine form. The proposed language is gender neutral. In addition to these corrections, exceptions to restrictions by approval of the city manager or designee have been included as needed throughout the document. I was not planning on reading through the document, but providing a section-by-section highlight of key changes and updates. Section 15A-1 definitions. The existing definitions are in need of updates, including expanded scope and slight revision. Specific definitions for words referred throughout the park code are proposed, department, designated areas, director, and park. Clarifying the definition of vehicle is recommended to ensure protective use of motorized wheelchairs by the physically disabled. Section 15A-2 applicability. Minor general revisions are the only recommended changes. Section 15A-3 damages to city property. The proposed code includes prohibition against the use of metal detectors. This restriction is necessary because upon discovery of underlying metal, park patrons often dig into the ground in search of the source. The resulting holes are rarely refilled, producing a trip hazard and liability. Those individuals who have called to inquire about our policy restriction have been receptive to the rationale. Additionally, contact information for these individuals is retained so they can be called upon for assistance as needed, as in the instance of lost joy or something of significant value in a park.
Can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do we have a sense of how many individuals fall into that category? Is it a lot of people?
I've only had two.
Okay.
In my time with the city.
Okay, sorry.
So I have retained their information in case we need to call upon them. Section 15A-4 sanitation. The existing restrictions curtail pollution while still allowing for the necessary treatment of bodies of water on city property, for instance, the use of sonic devices in the ponds and lakes in the park to keep algae growth in check. Language here is clarified to direct the public to utilize trash cans, not dumpsters, that are present at some of our recreation facilities. Section 15A-5 fishing, golf, roller skating, flying, similar activities. The list of activities involving projectiles is in need of expansion as a safety precaution. Exceptions are included for designated areas and activities under the supervision of authorized personnel to facilitate responsible, safety-conscious recreation. Growing public safety concerns pertaining to the launching and flying of self-propelled aircraft, such as model planes, motorized gliders, or rockets necessitated the regulation thereof. The launching of rockets has been attempted at Borah Park, but has been prevented by staff intervention. This deterrence was required due to the safety hazards such activities pose to those individuals and those present in city parks.
Can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
Are remote-controlled aircraft really considered hazardous by your department? Rockets, I understand, having flown some rockets myself.
Rockets are banned in this area by the FAA anyhow.
Yeah, and again, I guess if I can jump in on this, the state in the past legislative session did adopt legislation where they have superseded the right of municipalities to regulate drones and other hand-operated.
Remote control.
Yeah, remote control. So, and Michelle's well aware of that. So we had talked about, this was submitted before the legislation was passed, so that section will probably need to be modified before final.
But does that cover the typical, you know, hobby shop level remote control airplane?
Yeah, that's also the definition of a drone.
Yes, it's an unmanned aircraft, so it's used by remote control.
Okay.
I imagine the legislature will be revisiting part of that. Anyway.
Yeah. And the bill has not yet been signed either, so.
Yeah, because some of this has to be, some of the wording also maybe should be corrected because here you're talking about, you know, any self-prepared and/or gliders. I mean, those aren't drones. Self-prepared should be a rubber band. I mean, I've made many rubber-band planes are self-prepared, I mean propelled. You know, so make sure that the language is clear on these types of things. And gliders, I mean, what's with the glider?
There are, there are remote-controlled gliders, actually. So where the control services are.
But wording is very important because of, as Neil was saying, the hobby level of it, there's a big group of people who like to fly airplanes and I can't believe that everybody's going to ban those all of a sudden, but, you know, it's the way life is now.
Well, the draft doesn't ban them, it just regulates them, right? I mean.
No.
No, it prohibits them.
It prohibits them.
Unless you get approval by the supervisor.
Okay, no, okay.
Right.
So that would include, if there was, if someone wanted to hold a remote control model airplane exhibition event at the fairgrounds, they could do it by getting a permit from the city, correct?
Well, the fairgrounds is.
The fairgrounds is not.
The state is going to regulate this. We're not going to regulate it.
Correct.
So it's up to the state. And yeah, we've seen instances in the past where the state has sort of overreached and it's very hard to get them to roll it back.
But if the state doesn't go forward with that, is, I don't know, I mean, it seems a little, a little overreaching for me, from what I've seen of model airplane activity is, doesn't strike me as being particularly dangerous and I don't know where people would fly those if we don't allow them to fly them in public parks.
There actually is a model airplane park specifically for that purpose. Other park codes do prohibit the use of remote-controlled aircraft in their park codes, and that field is the Walt Goodfield in Boyd's, Maryland, specifically. field is the Walt Goodfield in Boyd's, Maryland, specifically designated for such use, so.
Around the country.
But we will go through and we will clarify.
Yeah.
Language and work with legal services.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Section 15A-6 swimming, bathing, wading, ice skating, boating. Staff recommends that ice skating regulation occur in this section rather than in Section 15A-12 sledding, skiing, snowboarding, as it is thematically more keeping with the group of these activities based on where in the parks they can occur rather than the season of activities. Although ice skating on the ponds at Borah Park had been, has been long prohibited, the park code did not specifically address the restriction against such activity. It was implied, but it did not say ice before skating. So this simply keeps the park code consistent with existing city regulations. Prohibitions against other crafts are necessary restricting rafts, inner tubes, inflatables, et cetera, for the safety and liability purposes. Section 15A-7 alcoholic beverages, controlled substances, prescription drugs. This requirement, the requirement for a liquor license to sell alcoholic beverages extends from Montgomery County Department of Liquor Control. The proposed addition serves to support this regulation. The section contains the proposed inclusion of restrictions on the transport use and sale of controlled substances and prescription drugs in parks, which is currently unaddressed by this chapter. The suggested regulation protects the legal use of prescription drugs as prescribed by a doctor. 15A.
Another question.
Sure.
I mean, this activity is illegal anywhere, so is it necessary to add this language relating to our parks when it's just illegal activity regardless?
We had police and legal services on the task force, and they felt that it was important to also incorporate it into the park code.
Okay.
So then the people violating this would be committing.
Two crimes.
A municipal violation as well as whatever their other thing is. So we would be prosecuting them as, or potentially.
Potentially.
We'd have the option.
Right, I said potentially, yes.
Section 15A-8 fireworks. Minor general revisions are the only recommended changes. Section 15A-9 weapons. This section contains a recommended update to provide an exception conditional approval by the city manager or designee. For some events, security officers have been hired as a cost-savings measure, the utilization thereof having been sanctioned by the city manager or designee via contract. The intent of allowing such an exemption is to serve public safety and maintain fiscal Section 15A-10 camping. This sanction facilitates planned activities by the city or approved group, for instance, a scouting overnight camp event at Borah Park. A few jurisdictions have an annual camp out for families in one of their large parks. 15A-11 horseback riding. Minor general revisions are the only recommended changes. Section 15A-12 sledding, skiing, and snowboarding. Apart from the proposed relocation of ice skating to Section 15A-6, the only significant proposed change to this section is to include other motorized equipment with a prohibition against snowmobiles. This expansion is due to the popularity of all touring vehicles and other snow machines.
On this one, I mean, it says that you can only go sledding or whatever at places and times designated by the city manager. Have we ever done that? I'm not aware of it.
The parks are open sunrise to sunset, so.
So it isn't at a time or place designated for this activity, it's just when the parks are open, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we have passive parks that people actually sled in at night.
Right, they said a lot at Borah Park.
But they also, so, but the passive parks are, people use them after dark, so, I mean, we don't.
Well, they're not supposed to.
Correct.
Well.
But also, I mean, this makes it sound like there's a specific designation for these activities, and I don't know how that would work. I don't think we've actually done that, just, you know, when you wake up one morning, there's snow on the ground. Tony, you say, oh, people can go sledding or something, I don't know. I think we need to look into that, how that would operate more.
Right, that was existing language, but we can go ahead and try to modify that.
But I'm also concerned that, I mean, I'm wondering, there's active sledding and tobogganing when you're going down the hill at a high rate of speed, and there might be reasons to restrict that to certain areas, but there's also people pulling their kids on a sled through a walkway, and that seems to me would have a different set of locations, so maybe we should think about that a little bit more if you're going to have any limits on it at all.
Okay, I want to ask a language interpretation question and follow up to Kathy's question. In that clause, does the phrase "at places and times specifically designated therefore by the city manager" apply only to the other land controlled by the city, or does it apply to that and the city parks? That might actually be a question for Lynn, I don't know. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It may very well be they're talking about permitted in city parks and any other land where there's, where there's a permit from the city manager. You see what I'm saying?
Correct. Yeah, we'll look at that, we'll look at that language. I think there needs to be clarification in the section.
There are a couple of these where there's a lot of clauses, and it's not clear, there's some in the, in the next part, the next part you can get to too.
The problem that comes with the, with the sledding, because there was a big to-do last year of people sledding, and, you know, kids are going to sleigh ride, no matter what happens, or, as Kathy said, is pulling a sled. We need to be very clear about these things, because pulling a sled and sleigh riding are two different things, but kids are going to sleigh ride, no matter whether, if there's a hill and there's snow on it, they're going to sleigh ride. And I can't see us sending out our SWAT, SWAT teams and rounding up the kids, so, let's be careful.
Ski control, ski control.
Well, I think it's, it's.
Be careful on.
Like at the capital.
The wording that we have, and, you know, it's getting to the point now, you know, you can't have, you know, playgrounds now are almost, you know, you can't go on them, you can't do things, and we keep, now with the model airplanes and this and that, we keep encroaching on, you know, things that we all took for granted when we were kids, and nothing's really changed. I mean, maybe the sleds go faster now, but the hills are steeper, I don't know, but, but, you know, we've got to stop this and, and at least be more, shall we say, have more common sense, and then make sure that the wording is appropriate. The other thing, too, is that the opening and closing, it says at sunset, sunset's not dark, and, you know, and kids are going to still sleigh ride after sunset, because it's still light out, and even then they do it at nighttime, and, you know, so.
Do it under streetlights.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable if the language was actually the opposite, that basically it's okay unless there's a, there's a specifically posted or designated by the city manager that a spot is not okay to sled.
Right.
Right? I mean, for example, Lakeland's Park, right alongside the middle school, there's a fairly small hill, it's probably 15 feet long, that people sled on. There's, I don't think there's any reason why you wouldn't do that, but I would hate to think that Tony has to get up and make a list of all the places where it's okay every time it snows. I'm pretty sure he doesn't really want to have that added to his list of things to do.
Well, that's why my question might lead to a more permissive reading of the same exact language.
Yeah, but I went back and reread it, and I'm not sure it's, that solves it, because it says permitted in city parks.
Only at places.
Or upon land controlled by the city, only at places and times, so.
It would be all city parks then, in that reading?
Yeah.
Plus additional land controlled by the city, only at those places and times.
Right, and Tony has to okay it all.
Well, that's where the comma goes.
That's right. It's a comma.
Yeah. So, but I don't know that we should, that it should be everywhere in city parks either.
I don't know that either.
I mean, I think there might be some places that are dangerous. I know I certainly remember going down hills and landing in creeks when I was a kid, and if we have that opportunity, we might want to restrict it.
But I think Neil had the, had the proper idea, is, you know, let's designate the places they can't do it, that are dangerous, and there are substantial reasons for kids not being there, because, because otherwise, you know, like last year, you're going to have kids sleigh riding everywhere, and then what are we going to do? And if we're not, if we don't do anything, then we have no law, and it's back to where we just said, so, think about this carefully.
All valid points, we'll work with legal services and look at the language. Okay. 15A-13 picnics, fires. Among the proposed changes in this section is the expansion of allowable areas for picnics. Protocols for the disposal of coals are outlined to ensure public safety and to protect park land from unnecessary damage. With regards to grills, controlled fires, and other food preparation devices, approved placement, and appropriate disposal of coals have been clarified to ensure the safety of all park patrons. This clarification also ensures that commercial food vendors will continue to be able to use the necessary equipment when participating in salient city events.
In this, in 15A-13A, that's another case where there's a lot of clauses, and I think it's confusing. I might suggest that maybe we should define active area and passive area somewhere else, rather than listing the things that might make something an active area, because I think that would make it easier to read. And then I had a question about personal grills. The subsection C there says, "Personal grills should be placed for use in close proximity to the city-provided grills in and around the designated picnic pavilion area." Does that suggest there has to be a picnic pavilion for use of personal grill in a park, or not?
Well, staff was recommending that within the, wherever the picnic, the picnic tables are and the pavilions, there's also the trash cans and whatever you would need to go ahead and put out the coals and dispose of them and all of that for safety.
So if a park doesn't have a pavilion and picnic tables, you can't use a personal grill?
We've had.
Is that the intent, or?
Well, we've had issues in some of the parks with hot coals being left, so we are trying to really sort of designate areas that they could be used, and then people can come and picnic anywhere that they wanted to, we're just trying to monitor the location of grills.
Okay. Then I'm wondering, maybe I'd like to see a list of where the pavilions are located if we're restricting it. I know where some of them are, but I don't know if I know where all of them are, if we're restricting it to that.
15A-14, commercial activity on park property. The original language is updated in order to better edify the public as to what constitutes the soliciting for or conducting any business. Additional examples have been included. This was required due to two growing trends. The first is instruction in classes are being offered on city property by individuals or businesses for profit, absent proper authorization. This poses liability to the city and potential conflicts. I read in last week's Lakeland's Leader that a business in the Kentlands is now offering fitness classes in the Main Street Pavilion on two nights, one of which will conflict with a Thursday evening Main Street Music Festival, a permitted event. The other issue that we have is we have unpermitted vendors that appear at city events. An example is, at July 4th, the Youth Services Division sells glow necklaces as a fundraiser, but you won't believe how many other people show up to sell glow necklaces that do not have a permit, and they're unauthorized vendors that are on the site. Section 15A-15 permits. Here, a clarification of language is recommended to clarify, clearly identify areas that require a permit for use, set forth priority for use of such spaces, and indicate which activities require a permit. To dispel any ambiguity, the exemption of playground use from permit requirements is explicitly stated, as is the exception that Parks and Facility rules and regulations be followed at permitted activities. With regards to demonstrations, permits help to ensure that personnel resources, such as police and public works who may need to set up barricades, are sufficiently allocated to meet the needs of the public. We did receive notice last year that a group was going to demonstrate in front of Congressman Delaney's office, allowing us to be proactive. That being said, in some instances, prior permission won't be possible and cannot be enforced, but the Assistant City Attorney suggests keeping the requirement in the code in order to avoid additional argument that the code does not require a permit. As this is less likely to be an issue in front of buildings, it is recommended that broad requirements be maintained for fields and other areas that may be in active use during such time. Section.
Can I ask a question about that section? There's a reference in subsection C to an exception for the synthetic turf fields, which of course I understand, because the rules for synthetic turf fields are different. But I'm a little concerned that the way it's worded here, without any description elsewhere in this section about what rules would apply to synthetic turf fields, almost suggests that you don't need any permit for use of the synthetic turf field ever. And I just want to make sure we clarify that, because that's not the case.
Good point.
What we're actually saying is that there are different rules for the turf field, not that the turf field is totally exempt from the permit requirement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Sure, we can go ahead and clarify that.
I also have a question. I saw, I ran into some neighbors in, that were, tried to have a picnic on the picnic tables in the Kentlands Green, and were chased off by folks from the, either the arts barn or the mansion, because they didn't have a reservation. I mean, is that, was that because someone else had a reservation, although there would be no way to know that, or can't you just come and use the tables?
You can come and use the tables, I would just, I would need more specific information, date, if there was a program that was going to occur on the green, but typically anyone could show up and have a picnic at the tables.
That's what I'd expect. All right, thanks.
That's why we call them parks. Public parks.
It was a surprise, right?
Yeah.
Okay. 15A-16 hours and intended use of park property. An extension of accessible park hours is recommended under the condition of a permit, rental agreement, or planned city events and activities. For clarity and accuracy, an itemized list of venues available for rental has been generalized and indicates that the itemized list of rentable outdoor venues shall be maintained by the Department of Parks Recreation and Culture. 15A-17, dog exercise areas.
Shelby, I go back to what I said earlier about this sunrise to sunset, you know, I mean, those are, like, like in our neighborhood, you know, right at our entrance is a park, and people are there all the time, day, night, everything, because you just walk across the, you know, to get into our neighborhood, and so we, again, wording is everything here, and, you know, does that mean we can't go in that park at night, you know, after sunset? Sunset's what, 6:30, 7:00, and it stays, you know, light till 9:00? And there's always people there, especially on the, on the skateboard parks, you know.
Yeah, the skate spot actually is illuminated by streetlights, so, you know, the kids can be there after.
They're there all the time.
We also have lights on the courts.
I'm not one to tell them to go home.
Yeah. Traditionally, park codes list park hours, and all of the area parks have sunrise to sunset, unless it specifically has a program or something else in it. Not saying a person can't walk through a park, it is open.
Actually, it says, "No person shall be in park property."
Yeah, well, that's what we put in the park code.
You're saying physically can't walk through a park.
Right, right.
Oh, you, okay, yeah, so.
I understand, you got to draw a line somewhere for a general rule, and that's kind of tricky.
Yeah.
And then if you end up having different times for all these different little pocket parks and other facilities, it gets a little tricky to understand what the rules are on a broader basis. So, I hear you guys, what you're saying about, you know, certain individual facilities, but I also kind of understand that there's got to be a general line, you've got to draw somewhere.
Right, and we do receive complaints from the Lakeland Skate Spot if children are there when it is dark out. Okay.
But, you know, but the word after dark is another, is a different designator than, you know, I can understand after dark as opposed to sunset.
Right, Sergeant. Scarf is stepping up to the microphone.
One of the reasons why we use sunset is, we routinely have users in the park, and it's often hard to designate the wanted user from the unwanted user. So there are some times where we have to have the flexibility to use our common sense about somebody walking through a park after sunset, as opposed to somebody laying around around a pond or not having any general purpose. So sunset's a good parameter for us, we just apply it with common sense.
So, but we do have parks where there are lights, there are lighted courts, there are lighted fields, there are streetlights adjacent to the park that would certainly allow them to be used, even though it's after dark, and I think we need to decide whether or not we're going to allow those kind of uses, or, and if we are, then let's be specific about that. We can't just, you know, so.
There's nothing wrong with posting a sign.
Just post a sign.
This is the specific rules for this park. I mean, they have a basketball court, I mean, they used to play basketball there all hours of the night, and if nobody got bothered by it, I mean, you know, kids are playing.
Well, people were bothered, but I can maybe have a time. People are bothered that that one's right behind my house. I can hear them, and I would rather not hear them after 9:00, but the lights are there. And if we're going to restrict it to a certain time, that's fine, but we have the lights there for a reason, so people can use them after dark.
Yeah, I think we should recognize areas where there are obviously facilities designed for night use separately. I do think it makes sense to have the more general prohibition so that enforcement of activities that are problems can happen. But, obviously, I don't know, I mean, if there's a lighted field and then people have a permit and they're playing a game, can you tell some other people that aren't part of it, they can't sit there and, you know, next to it? I don't, I don't know. So, I think we probably need to have some kind of separate way to process lighted areas.
People would play tennis under the lights at midnight, at Diamond Park.
That's the one you can, can you-
Yeah, you can hear, well, you can hear the tennis ball.
No, but I mean, because that one, you can turn it on yourself.
Yeah, that's a quarter machine, right? Something like that. Anyway, so I think we just need to distinguish those areas where this is allowed, because right now it's a blanket provision.
Right, we will look at language for such uses with the lights.
Correct.
Okay, section 15A-17, Dog Exercise Area. So the recommended changes to this section will constitute a policy change that will impact the dog exercise area at Green Park by discontinuing non-resident memberships. Staff recommends that access be limited to city residents free of charge with a valid dog license through the use of a key fob or combination code as now in common practice in other municipalities. While the dog exercise area at Green Park was once the only enclosed off-leash park for dogs in the metropolitan area, in 1998, Montgomery County residents now have access to six other dog parks in the area free of charge. Given the prevalence of comparable facilities and the growing trend for area apartment complexes and HOAs to offer dog exercise area or agility course amenities, the city has seen a steep decline in the non-resident membership in the last five years. When the park opened, we had 250 non-resident memberships. In 2014, the total non-resident memberships were 34. Current year-to-date non-resident membership is at nine. While the dog park, when the dog park opened, the city's population was less than 52,000 according to the Dwelling Units and Estimated Population Report. Today, it's at 66,360. In light of Gaithersburg continued and projected growth, with the addition of developments such as Crown, Watkins Town Center, these parameters will benefit residents directly by ensuring a more safe and secure facility for them to comfortably enjoy. In addition to this revision, the proposed changes will bar dogs with transmittable communicable diseases from dog exercise areas and empower the city manager or designate to ban an individual or dog if necessary. These measures are intended to ensure the health and safety of city residents and their pets.
I think I'm fine about the part of non-resident memberships not being available, but I'm wondering, this also referenced guest passes, is that, would there still be any opportunity for that? I'm just thinking if a city resident had guests and they wanted to go there together, would that be feasible somehow?
That's an excellent point, Kathy. I was going to bring it up because my grandkids come with their dog, and what I did, because they can't go, or is it, we have, you should be able to get a pass or do something.
Right, I'm going to allow Lisa Holland to step forward to address the changes.
There's some hotels that allow pets as well, for people out of town.
That's certainly something we can consider. We very rarely get guest passes anymore. I don't remember, we haven't had one for years. But if that's important, we can certainly put it back in.
Well, in that case, we just take the dog and argue the point. I mean, you know, you could be, you could be overboard, and what we're trying to do is apply common sense to some of these things. I understand what you're doing, I agree that it should be for city residents, but at the same time, there's always extenuating circumstances. I mean, you got to be, you got to apply some common sense here.
Well, they, we will have to still have the guest pass, you will not be able to sneak in, sorry, because we will have some sort of mechanism there, hopefully, so.
Probably have a guard dog.
Thank you, Lisa.
Just let them run loose in the neighborhood, what the heck.
All right.
Okay, section 15A-18, Violations and Junctive Relief. Revised language clarifies the clarification of civil infractions and misdemeanors. As in, currently the case, most violations will be considered civil infractions that the city can pursue, rather than misdemeanors which require the county state's attorney to prosecute. The section specifies that only violations of section A-7 alcoholic beverages, controlled substances, prescription drugs, and section 15A-9 weapons will constitute as misdemeanors.
Well, then we wouldn't be prosecuting those anyhow, it turns out, okay. So this would be an, that would just be an additional charge that those prosecutors could bring to play.
Okay, 15A-19, Exemption of Persons Working on Property. Just some minor general revisions. 15A-20, Emergency Park Closures. A new section pertaining to the emergency closure of parks and the protocols thereof is recommended as park closure is something in the best interest of health and public safety. Examples of instances wherein health, public safety is at risk may include down trees for wires due to weather, some natural disasters, or God forbid, the occurrence of a death on city property somewhere. So this concludes the formal introduction this evening. Members of the task force are present. If we can answer any additional questions, we will work with legal to go ahead and look at the proposed language with the comments that were raised this evening.
I have one other one, because I couldn't find it when we were on that part.
Sure.
In 15A-3, Section G, which is, basically says you shouldn't hurt any animals, it seems to say animal, reptile, or bird, and then later, eggs nest or young of any reptile or bird. I'm guessing reptiles and birds were separated out because they have eggs, but I'm wondering if it's necessary to reference reptiles and birds since they are animals and mammals have nests, and why wouldn't the same rules apply to all of them?
That was Elisa Holland.
You mean, when we get old, we can't feed the birds?
Well, I mean, the part I'm talking about was in there before. I was thinking we should simplify it more.
Okay, we can go ahead and do that. I'm sorry, she was looking at that section for us as a member of the park task force.
Right, yeah. I mean, it took out wild, so now it includes all animals, and that, I just think saying animals is probably fine, so.
We can clarify that. So I know you brought up a lot of issues, but when we started looking at this from scratch, we looked at it for over a year, and I really appreciate your comments, because we looked at it and looked at it, and what's clear to us may not be clear to others, so.
So one quick thing that wasn't entirely clear, going back to remote control devices, is a remote-controlled boat okay on a city ponder lake, or is it not okay? Is that counted as a boat?
I wondered about that, too.
That would be counted as a boat, the craft.
Is that a safety issue, do you think, or should we?
Other park jurisdictions do outlaw it, and it's used only in permitted events, like if a boy scout group was going to come out and do it. The concern, again, was for the wildlife that's around the area, so we're happy to look at it.
I think we should specify, make sure that the language is there just in case.
Yeah, I mean-
The language is there prohibiting it?
Well, about regulating it, I don't, prohibiting is one thing.
Well, right now, it's prohibited unless you have a permit.
Right now, it's prohibited, so unless you have a permit, so.
You know-
I mean, we don't have a model boat basin, like, you know, some cities or counties that have model boat basins where they do, you know, competitions, model boat competitions.
Right, there is one at South Germantown Park.
Ryan, you going to say something?
Yeah, I have what might turn out to be a potentially a big issue for this discussion, so apologize in advance. But, since we are revisiting the park ordinance sort of holistically in this process, I think now might be a good time to talk about whether we want to revisit some sort of restriction on smoking within our parks. We had an extensive discussion about this about a year and a half ago, with no final resolution, but there was interest in pursuing the discussion further. When we talked about it a year and a half ago, we were really talking about a much broader set of potential restrictions that might have affected private dwelling places and other city facilities. Here, I'm just going to propose that we think about how any restrictions might be appropriate just for purposes of the park ordinance. I think that might make our lives a little easier if we can hone in on that issue. Personally, I think it makes sense for us to develop a little bit of consistency in the way that rules have been applied. For example, the county has a ban on smoking within 25 feet of a playground. That county law does not apply to our public city playgrounds. However, I recently discovered that it does apply to our privately-owned city playgrounds that are operated, owned and operated by HOAs, for example. So, right now, we've got two sets of rules applying within the city, which could create a little confusion. And I understand there are a lot of different feelings on the issue, and I think there could be some compromise in how we pursued any potential restrictions with respect to our park spaces. For me, personally, I think that a restriction in and around playgrounds makes sense. We can debate whether a restriction in other parts of parks should or shouldn't happen, but I think that might be something that we might want to consider as part of this process. And I'd also point out that this is just a discussion about introducing. And as we all know, always better to introduce a piece of legislation that's broader, and we can whittle it down through the public hearing process and through the discussion, policy discussion process if we want. But I wanted to bring that up, I do think it makes sense to put it here because we're having this discussion about the whole park ordinance, and I think we could fit it in there somewhere. So I did want to raise that, and I don't know if other folks want to chat about that.
Yeah, so the park facilities such as pavilions and bathrooms, is smoking allowed in those areas?
Anyone can smoke anywhere at this time.
So do we have a problem? Are we having complaints about people smoking outside at our parks?
Well, I can tell you anecdotally, that I take my kids to public playgrounds within the city, and on occasion, I've had to deal with smokers either in the playground or right next to the playground.
So how would that be enforced when there's a problem?
Like any other-
First, you have to post it.
Like any other law that we have in the city that has an infraction penalty, you would have to, well, you'd have to post it. But if somebody's violating any other rules of our parks ordinance, somebody'd have to, probably have to call somebody to come take care of it. I mean, we don't, we don't have, we don't have police and park observers at every park all the time.
I'm just trying to find out, is it a, would it be a call to the police or a call to Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I'm open to whatever suggestions folks think make the most sense.
Well, there's two ways of regulating, well, we need to decide if you want to address cigarette smoking or tobacco in any form, and if you'd like to do a partial ban or a total ban, and then providing guidance on enforcement options. So enforcement could be self-enforcement. Most outdoor smoking ordinances are designed to be self-enforcing, requesting voluntary compliance. The expectation is through education and sinus, residents and visitors will become aware of the smoking restrictions, and most will obey the law, and that's sort of that self-policing, where you can go ahead and refer to a sign if someone is smoking and they're not supposed to be. And then the second level is code enforcement guidelines for violations. Enforcement can be an established dollar amount punishable by municipal infraction or misdemeanor. And then you would call upon the police.
No, wait, if it's code violation, you'd have to call code enforcement?
Yeah, for a misdemeanor, it would be our code enforcement officers that would enforce that.
But that's the same-
For a misdemeanor, it would be the police, yeah.
But that's the same-
Same for almost everything else, yeah.
If somebody is walking their dog through a city park and they don't pick out after their dog, I mean, that's, that's a violation, too, you know?
Police aren't going to do it.
I mean, the vast majority of those aren't getting caught because they're not being seen happening, but the idea is we have that long place to discourage folks from doing it, and once in a very rare blue moon, I'd imagine, there might be an officer, whether it's a, whether it's a code enforcement officer or a police officer who watches something like that happen. Unfortunately, they have to watch that happen, and might respond, but-
Well, actually, I bet, I imagine animal control gets complaints about that.
Or animal control, for animal control if they're watching, right.
Already.
Right, right, so, but, you know, I mean-
I just wanted to know how it would work.
I'm throwing it out there, I don't, I haven't really thought out exactly how it might work. I don't think that it should be anything more than an infraction, at most. I don't even know if we have legal authority to make it more than that, but-
I don't think we do.
Yeah, so.
So there's, so, I guess in order to add it to what's introduced, we'd need some agreement.
I would agree to add it for further discussion.
Anybody else?
Just for introduction purposes. Anyone, anyone?
I'm not as, an advocate of it, but, you know, I do agree with him on playgrounds, playground areas and smoking in the playground area. I'm not exactly an average by 25 feet or 50 feet away, because now you get down to this semantics, and then we're back to this word processing thing about, was he 35 feet or was he 25 feet in the playground or in silver? I agree.
That would be your partial versus your total ban with the language.
Because, you know, we just keep encroaching, you know, we, you know, from sliding boards to whatever, you know, nowadays, everything is dangerous, and I just, I mean, I came from a different era, so I have a tough time with some of these things. And, you know, common sense, I would rather have us allow things and say some things you can't do specifically, as opposed to, don't allow anything unless we say you can do it. So, I mean, you know, there's a whole school of thought, so.
Well, for purposes of introduction, here, let me just clarify a little bit so that we can narrow it in a little bit. You know, I'm willing to talk out through the public hearing process and the policy discussion about how all these, how everything would work in response to a complaint. I wouldn't want more than an infraction, at most, could be less than that. I know, Kathy, you have expressed doubts about self-enforcing laws, and I understand that, and that's why I think maybe an infraction makes sense. I would propose that we, just for purposes of introduction, we add the language just for playgrounds at 25 feet around the playground, and that we include not just cigarettes, but e-cigarettes or whatever, whatever other stuff is out there now. And then, if appropriate, we can whittle that down during the public hearing and policy discussion process.
I would say tobacco products as well as electronic.
Okay.
And I would include, you know, chewing tobacco, cigars, and pipes.
Would it impact marijuana?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, that's okay.
Because it's something that other clauses already-
Controlled substance under the-
Unless it's for scrub.
It's already addressed. So you're still have some-
That's still a, yeah.
So we're in there.
You can't smoke, but you can smoke marijuana.
So we can either incorporate language into 15A-7, alcoholic beverages, controlled substances, and prescription drugs, or create a new section, 15A-21, Smoking.
The only thing I would say about 15A-7, even though it seems to fit there, is that you have to worry about the reference in 15A-18, because that one, you know, talks about the difference between an infraction and something more serious, and I wouldn't want this to be, again, I don't know that we even have the authority to make it more serious than just something that might be an infraction. So if we did put it in 15A-7, we'd have to amend 15A-18 to clarify that, so it might just be cleaner and easier to make it separate.
We'll create a new section.
It's a nuisance, an infraction.
Yeah, right.
All right, so I guess I'm, I am hearing one, two, three, so we do, we're going to introduce that, okay?
Just for introduction purposes.
For discussion.
For discussion.
Thank you all very much for your feedback.
So, we do need, go ahead.
Motion to introduce?
Yep.
Some of-
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm not paying attention.
Council members, do we have a second?
What are we saying?
I have to introduce.
Second, as amended.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, it carries 401.
Can I ask Michelle to tell us one more thing? So, you know, we've had a number of comments, and you, the staff developed the policy for free time on, or free access to our synthetic field that's not scheduled. And you introduced a policy and implemented it starting on Saturday, I believe. Can you explain for the public that might be watching, and for the rest of us here, how it's working, how it worked on the first weekend, and how it's supposed to work, et cetera, for our new synthetic field, which is-
Sure, I can do that. Let me just, first of all, close out the park code introduction, is that we'll work with legal staff, and then we'll see what's feasible with our timeline and all of that, and then set a date for the public hearing. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. In regards to the synthetic turf field at Lakelands Park, we've had some requests from the community to go ahead and have some community open play dates. the community to go ahead and have some community open play dates. So staff took some time to evaluate the requests that we were getting for permits and evaluate the schedule. So starting this past weekend on May 2nd, Lakelands Park, the synthetic turf field will now be open on weekends, on Saturdays from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:30 to 5:00 p.m. through November. And for our opening weekend, we had 13 people on Saturday and 22 people on Sunday. And so it is not for organized practices, but it is for community open play, and it went very well.
Great, thank you. I think that's great for the public to be aware of that. I suppose there'll be more users as it becomes known, so...
So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Michelle. So as I mentioned earlier, our staff guidance agenda item has been deferred. At this point, we have from the city attorney, do we have anything, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one item regarding the upcoming election. We did hear from the Mormon Church in Kentlands that we will not be able to use them as a polling site this upcoming election, so staff is researching other facilities. In fact, we toured four facilities today. We will be making a recommendation for the Board of Supervisors for elections, but certainly we will be working with Britt and her staff, too, once a site is selected, both that and Asbury, since there's a change there, of making sure we get out, you know, lots of ads, lots of notice, lots of signage, so the voters are clear where they have to go Election Day.
Great, thank you. Do we have anything from any other staff? We've got lots of staff here tonight. Someone make something up, come on. All right.
We're here because we're interested in parks.
We just did.
That's true, okay. So as we described earlier, our next, our work session next week is not here, it is off-site, it is at the, we're meeting at the Robertson Park Youth Center, 7:30 p.m. on May 11th, the next regular meeting of Mayor and Council is May 18th. We do have a book festival, we hope you'll join us. In the meantime, let's do great things at Gaithersburg, we'll see you soon.
At the book festival.